I'd like to call to order the special meeting of the Tiverton Town Council. We'll begin with the pledge of allegiance to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk?
Counsel Gurlak.
Present.
Counsel Shabett.
Present.
Counsel Lambert.
Present.
Counsel Roderick.
Present.
Counsel DiMediris.
Present.
Counsel Hooters absent.
Okay, business to be brought before the council. Street Advisory Committee requests for council to proceed with recommendations regarding Beach Tree Hill and Daniel Church Estates, continued from the June 30 meeting. We'll begin with Beach Tree Hill. Oh, at the podium.
My name is Jim O'Gallivant on Warren Avenue. I am a member of the Tiverton Street Advisory Committee, and to my right is our Director of Public Works, Stephen Belucci, who is an ex-official member of the same committee. Concerning Beach Tree, as it is in the backup, they have already formed a homeowners association, and they have also already filed inland evidence, which was a further request that we made of both subdivisions prior to our recommendation of acceptance.
Okay, anything else?
I believe it's thoroughly spelled out in the backup, but if you have any questions specific, I would be glad to attempt to answer them.
Okay, well, I think this is more directed towards Mr. Belucci. Mr. Belucci, what is the status of the roads in Beach Tree Hill?
Beach Tree Hill currently is in very good condition. It was finished when the original developer went bankrupt and Bank Five came in with their money and working together with the DPW, we completed the project to plans and specs. The only thing that's been holding it up all the time because going through the planning board process, I asked if the council would hold up acceptance based on the formation of the homeowners association to assume responsibilities of common land, and they've done that. I think they've met every responsibility they have had, and I recommend acceptance. It's the only last hurdle necessary for full recommendation by the council for acceptance of a town-maintained road.
Do you have an estimate what the additional costs will be for maintaining that road?
We maintain it now. We plow it, we sand it, we sweep it. We more or less took those responsibilities over because the developer walked and someone had to take care of the property. So we were taking care of it from the minute he started, and we have been ever since. So we collect rubbish. There's nothing really going to change except they assume the liability, the responsibility that the common property needs in these requirements for acceptance. But I didn't figure what it does cost us to maintain that subdivision on a monthly basis. We picked it up like seven yards.
Yep.
That'll be coming before you walk, but still out there with the very woods. You know, unless we're contractor or developer walked and we stepped in, so that's where we're at with that.
Okay. Anything from the council?
What streets are included in this subdivision? I have Rimrock Court and Mountain Laurel Lane.
Silver Beach. Also those streets.
Silver Beach Road.
I believe so.
The only question I have is, are we separating into two distinct issues, the streets versus Creamer Pond Dam and the work that we have done?
It's a separate subdivision.
Okay.
Beach Tree Hill is semi-connected to it, but it's part of the that whole area up there, but that's separate and distinct.
Okay.
Anyone from the public? Any saying none, Mr. Tights?
Mr. President, may I just suggest that further condition of the council's action on this would be to have the clerk make sure that the homeowners association document is cross-indexed against all of the homeowners, so that when anybody goes to buy any of those houses and has a title searched on, they'll find this homeowners association, Articles of Incorporation, on the chain of title as well.
Anything else from the council?
Just the Articles of Incorporation, the annual reports that they file with the Secretary of State. And that's the secondary problem that we have with these homeowners association. Forming it is no guarantee that it will stay in effect, and we may have this in a problem in the future. If the swales aren't maintained and there's no homeowners association in effect, we may be, you know, going back to them in the future. But at least this will be some protection that people buy it will see that on the chain of title and say, oh, there's a homeowners association. But unless you're going to require them to file a copy in the clerk's office as well, a copy of their annual report, is that what Madam Clerk is suggesting?
At least we have something that shows.
That it's still active.
That it's filed and that it's active.
Okay, subject to remaining active and a copy of the annual report being filed. Annual report for nonprofits, and this is due on June 30, so a copy of the annual report of the homeowners association being filed with the clerk's office by June 30 of each year?
Yes, please go to the mic.
My name is David Spitz, and I'm the president of the Beach Tree Homeowners Association. So it was just a quick question with regards to the maintenance of the security filing. Is that going to be, how is that, do you know what that process will be like? Will I be notified, or I just don't know at this point?
Do you want me to answer that?
Yes.
No, you don't get notified by them. It's your responsibility. Every year, you have to file an annual report with the Secretary of State. You can do it online now, so it's relatively easy, but it's like a tax bill. It's your responsibility. They don't send you any reminders. It's every June you're required to file a new, an annual report with who the people are and so forth.
I'm aware of the state process, I'm more curious about the town process that you're at.
No, same thing. You wouldn't get a reminder, you're just expected to at the same time you're filing the state one, send us a copy of it.
And I would have to file that or record that?
No, just file it with the clerk. You don't have to record it, just deliver it to the town clerk. That's what I'm envisioning anyway.
Anything else, sir? Okay, thank you. Okay, anything else from the council? I will entertain a motion regarding the Beach Tree Hill subdivision. After you break the mic?
I don't know if I can get closer. Maybe I shouldn't make the motion. Maybe that's a sign. I'll make a motion that we accept the Street Advisory Committee request to proceed with accepting the Beach Tree Hill, how do we want to put it?
Subdivision.
Subdivision, subject to meeting all legal requirements and the filing of an annual homeowners association report by June 30 of each year with the town clerk.
Second.
Motion second, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, motion carries. Say next, Daniel Church Estates. Can everyone hear me? Updated recommendations of Street Advisory Committee, backup documentation to solicitor.
The recommendation of the Street Advisory Committee also, since last meeting, changed concerning Daniel Church Estates. They have also filed with the Secretary of State's office a homeowners association with covenants, bylaws, et cetera. They have not, and I don't think they're aware of it yet, but they have not, as of now, filed with the land evidence. And as I said, it's just a request by the Street Committee as part of the condition. We ask for that for the same reason we ask for it with any other subdivision from now forward. The backup, the backup pretty much speaks for itself. Again, if there are any questions, I'll do my best to answer them.
Okay, I'll begin. There is a dam and a pond in Daniel Church, and I think that has to be clarified, and I'm sure Steve probably knows more about that.
Again, Daniel Church is back 20 years, where the contractor abandoned the project, but in this case, he had abandoned the project with just some seeding to do. I really don't know why it would happen way back then, but in any case, it's stretched on and on, and 20 years later, I think we've achieved the place we all were looking to get. The issue all along has been the pond, liability insurance of the pond. I think it was a big stumbling block. But the pond was approved by DEM as the area in which all the drainage for the subdivision empties. So it was part and parcel owned by the developer. It was part of the subdivision that was used for the drainage, currently used for the drainage. The roadway's 20 years old, but in this case, I'd recommend accepting it. The stormwater drainage, I believe you find, and I'm only recommending that we accept the stormwater drainage within the roadway layout. Any of the drainage off the roadway layout is part of the association's responsibility to maintain. I believe there's an oil-water separator, and there's drainage outlets, so anything to do with off-road drainage is not the responsibility of the town. Also, the maintenance thereof of the sluiceway that drains the pond will no longer be responsibility of the town by necessity. We never really liked the idea of maintaining something we don't own, but in this case, we have for, what, two to three years now. The subdivision consists of three roads, Daniel's Church, and I hope to get these three right, but I believe it's Drive, Church, Pond Road, and now Lit Lane. It's been a long time coming. There's been tremendous resistance along the way. As long as we meet all the restrictions that they have, and this is part of it, you know, at this time, I'd recommend acceptance on a level similar to Beach Tree Hill.
Okay, Steve, question is, you said the roads are 20 years old. Are there some areas that should be fixed prior to our acceptance?
We've been, again, providing all services for 20 years. We've rebuilt catch basins, several in the subdivision already. The only thing I can see, there's a crack across the road. It looks like maybe an electric line went across that needs fixing. But again, the 20, the road's 20 years old, it's in very good shape other than a small repair. I wouldn't mind just patching it as part, as part of the patching process, you know, to solve that, but we have no intent of going in and doing any roadway reconstruction, any building, and, you know, we accept it, it just becomes part of our roadway system and gets aligned for repairs, but there's nothing dangerous. There's a crack across the road, it will take care of.
Mr. Tights?
Yeah.
Regarding the pond and dam, that concerns me, even though we don't have responsibility for it. I'm worried that if something should happen and the homeowners association doesn't have the funds or doesn't do it, we're going to be liable for it.
Yes, I share your concern. May I just go back to the streets a moment, though? And ask Mr. Belucci a question? Mr. Belucci, I had heard that there was not a topcoat put on the roads on Daniel Church Estates. Is that?
I would say that's not true. I think it has a topcoat.
Okay, all right.
It looks like a topcoat.
Okay. Do you have, you mentioned about, you know, you only want to be responsible for the drainage that's in the streets. Do you have a plan? I know the DEM plans changed a couple of times. I have various versions of the plans. Do you have an as-built plan that shows where the drainage is that we would be responsible for as a town and where the drainage that the homeowners association would be responsible for is located?
Well, I talked to Kate, actually, this morning about that. Planning does, I do not have it in my possession, but she had all the documents, as-built plans and everything else necessary for acceptance. I asked her that specific question, do we need as-bills? And she had, you know, I hope the most current ones, but we do have as-built plans for them.
All right, because when I looked at this a few years ago, the DEM, there were plans on file with the town, and then there was a copy of a DEM modification, and they didn't match up. So that's my concern.
I was unaware of that.
I guess, Mr. President, I think it's necessary, before the town takes action to accept the streets, that we actually have the plans referred to when we're accepting it. Rather than just, since we've got this issue with the drainage system being separately, I think we need to specifically have a plan that says, that identifies what are those drainage systems that we're taking and what aren't. In answer to your question on the dam, too, yes, it has always been my position after research that the homeowners all are jointly and severally responsible for the dam. It's an obligation of the homeowners association through the documents that created it originally when the development was done. It's both a drainage function for all the roads, and it's also an amenity for the properties on there, that they, several of the houses front on the water, and they have the ability to have access to the water. And along with that, though, goes the responsibility for the dam. Now, I have spoken to Mr. Lou Cabral, who may be here tonight, I don't even know, okay, I just talked to him on the phone, I don't know what he looks like, that they're, you know, planning on taking responsibility and moving forward with that, including getting a liability insurance policy and so forth. I'm hesitant to recommend accepting them tonight until everything is taken care of, although I realize it takes time to do those things. As a practical matter, had that dam collapsed, as it might have in 2010 if the town hadn't stepped in, every homeowner would have been sued anyway, and maybe for wrongful death if it, if there was a real flood down the hill. The actual maintenance, once the deferred maintenance is taken care of, the actual annual maintenance on the pond and the dam is not even that significant, but I think we need to have that more formally documented, that the homeowners association is going to take care of that before we accept the roads, because it's all part of the same system. The road drainage is leading into the pond, and so the dam is part of that system. My suggestion would be to continue this for 90 days, to allow the homeowners association time to do more cleaning up of the dam that they want to do and get the liability insurance, and we can also check and make sure we have the correct plans involved for the drainage system and come back to it, but have it as a date certain, perhaps set it for the second meeting in October, so that we're not letting it drop through the cracks again.
Mr. Cabral?
Yes.
Would you address us? Yeah, go to the podium, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Mr. President, and members of the council. Yes, it's been a long time in trying to coordinate and bring folks together. 20 years has been quite a bit of confusion, lack of information, lack of coordination, and some resistance on several owners. So there hasn't been a consensus. Over the last 18 months, we have been working toward achieving consensus by the homeowners. We've gotten there. There remain some concerns and some issues about the drainage system and liability for the pond and things of that nature that were articulated by the town solicitor. We are working toward resolving those issues. We're confident that over the next couple of months, hopefully, we will have those issues resolved. I am in direct communication with DEM, and we understand what they're asking for in terms of the pond. It is a significant cleanup. It's something that you can't just go in with a weed whacker and take care of it. We're going to probably have to bring in some heavy machinery to cut down trees. We're going to have to access it through some private entity's property, so it's not a simple undertaking. We now realize that. A lot of us, we're not aware that there was a dam on the property, and I say that because we knew there was a stone wall with a very significant berm. I now know that is called a dam, so it's the berm, back of the berm that needs to be cleaned up. It's behind the area of, I believe, Holland and Leary, all the way through half of Mr. Peter Gill's property. The other half has been cleaned up. It's actually a very nice lawn that he has back there. So we're working on getting pricing for that cleanup. We're working to understand some of the issues regarding the drainage. We have been cleaning up annually the oil separator, so that's been done on an annual basis, and we have, finally, we have consensus among the majority of the property owners to move forward and do so in a way that has been articulated here this evening.
Thank you. Anything from the council?
Mr. President, I would support continuing this for 90 days. I would just ask folks on the Street Committee, perhaps, for a periodic update to just make sure that we're keeping a pulse and that the folks from the homeowners association is making, they're making progress as planned.
Anything else from the council?
Meanwhile, we will continue services, correct, Mr. Belucci?
I'm sorry, I can't hear you.
Mr. Belucci.
We will continue services on that road. We will continue service on that road.
Yes, we have always, yeah.
Okay, so there'll be no stoppage of that.
All right, anything else from the council? I will entertain a motion to continue this to a date certain. Could we have a date in October, Madam Clerk?
27th.
27th, Leona?
27th, yeah, 27th.
And at Town Hall. I don't think we need to be here again.
Yeah, Town Hall. So I will entertain a motion. Yes, yes, please, please come forward to the podium, please. We want to make sure everybody is.
This isn't my forte, so I'm a little nervous, I am. My family owns a property on Main Road that gets flooded all the time by the dam. I've talked to them in the past. My concern is very real. My mother's basement is totally ruined, the septic system is totally ruined. I'm just afraid if you guys let them get away with this, we have no recourse at all. That dam, whatever they decide to let it flow, Main Road is underwater, you all know. That wall is not going to, it's not my breach, it's going to breach, and someone's going to die, and I'm very concerned about that. And I know I'm a little nervous, I'm sorry if I'm so shaky. I just don't know if you guys let them take this over, or whatever they do. What are you guys going to do when they decide, okay, today we'll let the water flow? What kind of recourse is going to be put in there for the families that get underwater at the time they do this?
I think those are the things that we'll be looking at within the next 90 days.
Okay.
To ensure, you know, number one, the liability on that dam, and obviously, they'll have to work with DEM to make sure the structure is, as it should be, and I'm sure DEM also monitors outflow, so they're going to have to, you know, come back with a plan of what's going to happen with that dam.
Well, the only thing that I think you guys may not be aware of, I grew up in that, in the house, that pond level is a good foot to two to three feet higher than it ever was when we were kids. So there's more pressure on that wall than has ever been there before, and I just know that it's a matter of time, and that wall is going to breach unless somebody who knows what they're doing, which my father used to do, maintained the water flow, and it used to be a constant flow, so that was never a problem. My backyard is totally underwater. I mean, you cannot even mow the lawn, it's wet all the time. And unless, I mean, you guys do something to try to correct some of that drainage, it's not going to get any better, and then nothing changes. I just would appreciate anything that you can do, because it is a beautiful old home that's been totally ruined, basically, by a guilty church.
Can you please give us, can you speak into the mic, please, and give us your name and address?
Where do you get your name?
My name is Beth Ann Alcock, but it's, the property is 1368 Main Road, and it's Lois Hartnett.
Okay, and your address?
Is 72 Leonard Drive in Tiverton.
Okay, thank you. I'm sure Mr. Cabral is taking notes.
Yeah. May I? Mr. President, we had the inspector Paul Gigliamino at the site, say, about eight months ago, and because like you, we are concerned about the integrity of the wall and of the dam overall. And what he shared with me was that they were not, at that point, concerned at all with the integrity of the wall, the dam. They wanted it to be cleaned out completely. We are in the process, as I said a second ago, of doing just that, so that a full-scale inspection of the dam can occur by professionals. We then are going to propose that we put together a comprehensive maintenance plan that we will bring forward to the council, in which we periodically, and when I say periodically, I'm thinking maybe quarterly, we have someone who goes out to the drainage system, understands what's going on with the public, with the coordination with the town, public works department, to ensure that the facility of the drainage system is working the way it should be, that the dam has full integrity. If there isn't, if it does not, then we will address it. It's that simple. I apologize to you that it hasn't been done sooner. It's not because some of us have not been trying, we have. We will be working very diligently over the next several months to address these issues and provide as much support to you and to the town to address the concerns that you have.
Thank you, I appreciate it. I just didn't want, I just want you to know that it really is still a serious problem in the backyard and in the house.
We recognize that, and we want to address it. We really do. It's just, there's been too many lawyers involved, with all due respect to the attorneys in the room, lack of information, lack of coordination, lack of comprehensive planning, and just reached a point that we've decided enough is enough, let's move forward, and that's what we're trying to do.
Please, please, please go to the mic, please, sorry.
Do you still drain it every once in a while?
We're constantly, and I mean constantly monitoring the sluiceway. We have the grate built, and we always keep it clean. So it's as down as, pretty much as low as it can be, as long as it doesn't get clogged. I don't know any way of making it lower unless you take the sluiceway out and drop the elevation. the elevation. The good news is, the state is going to build a new culvert on Main Road from the dam, not on the private property coming up, but from the dam all the way to Highland. That now consists of an old two-by-four-foot granite constructed culvert that's caved in. They know that's causing the backups when we try to rush a lot of water through. But the state has already a contract out, I believe, and they're gonna go ahead and redo it. So, that'll help the draining immensely. But it all comes down to keeping that sluice way open. And we'll keep it open till the satisfaction and agreement between all parties. I think that's what we do. If there's a storm coming, we have all these sensors places we go to, and that's one of the firsts. So, we're watching it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, anything else from the council? I will entertain a motion that we continue this to October twenty-seventh with periodic updates from the street committee regarding the progress. So moved. Motion second, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Motion carried. Thank you. Okay, newly created Tiverton Wastewater District requests approval of resolution authorizing transfer of certain assets of the town. Mr. Kendrick?
Mr. President, members of the council, tonight we ask that the asset transfer agreement be, our resolution should be approved by the town council, so that the newly formed Tiverton Wastewater District has operating funds, so that we can operate and get started with our neighborhood meetings, our voting, and engineering involved. Mr. Tights has drawn up an agreement. Our attorney has reviewed it, and I think we've come to an understanding. I think you have the latest agreement before you.
Mr. President, do you want me to?
Counsel?
The one thing that, well, the one thing that...
It's not working.
The one thing that comes to mind, Andy, is that these are physical assets, and they're all different. Financial assets for something, and I will use the resident's account. Are all of the physical assets what we're transferring in? Are there no financial or financial liabilities?
No, we are transferring the physical assets as well, the financial assets as well. They're not on the list. The list is, the list is, that was handed out, but if you read the resolution, and I think three, two B is the clean copy, provides for it, the liabilities are going with the district. They're gonna be responsible for it. We're gonna transfer it as-is, where-is. They're gonna be responsible for all of it. There are also certain funds. There's what's called, was it account two oh, two eight zero? And this is, I talked to the treasurer, these are the funds that have come in and go out. We do the accounting for them. It comes in and out of the treasurer, but it's always in a restricted account. So, the idea is that we give them a certain amount right away, so they've got operating funds and fifty thousand, an additional fifty thousand within thirty days. And then our goal is by September fifteenth, we would transfer the remainder. Once we've just made sure about any financial liabilities, are there any accounts payable outstanding and so forth that people will look to the town? We want to make sure that's clear.
Once that's completed, they'll be in charge of their own accounting, so we'll be out of the wastewater accounting business.
Yes, we will be out of the wastewater accounting business. There's also funds in the Community Development Block Grant Account. And those will be transferred as soon as we're, we, and specifically the treasurer, is adequately satisfied that they're accounted properly, because they're not necessarily all for sewer construction. Some of that was for other stuff, but any of that that was designated to sewer construction. If we're sitting on the cash for it, we'll transfer the cash. To the extent that it's awarded funds, we will assign our right to the award, assuming we get the consent, we'll get the written consent of the state of Rhode Island on that. And this does authorize the town administrator and the town treasurer to execute the various documents and make it happen. And then the only unusual thing is the Mount Hope Interceptor, which, again, the interesting, the liabilities are separate from the assets. It's not like this is a train line, and the tickets we sell on the trains go to pay down the bonds. The bonds are paid by the taxes, which we collect anyway. The liability of the pipe is totally separate. Unless the pipe totally collapsed, and all the property that depended on it for sewage was suddenly valueless because we had to revoke their certificates of occupancy, it would take that degree of crisis to have any bearing on it. But in any case, why we are still responsible for paying the bonds on it, the intent is that we would lease it to the Wastewater Management District. They'd be responsible for maintaining it. When the bonds are paid off, we would transfer that to them as well. That will require the consent of the bondholders and the trustee. The good news is, all the bonds have been bought up by one bank, Washington Trust. So, we just have two banks, Bank of New York, we have two banks, neither one of which is Bank of America to deal with. Bank of New York and Washington Trust, we would need their consent to do the lease agreement. And if for some reason they do not consent, then we'll have to, we'll be coming back to you for some alternative arrangement there.
Andy, I just have a question. Just, a resolution is the only thing required to transfer these assets?
Yes, well, there will be specific deeds and leases involved, and easements for the actual effecting of the transfer, and this resolution is authorizing the town administrator and the town treasurer to sign the various documents. The town administrator would sign the deeds and so forth. The town treasurer would handle the financial transfers.
Anything else from the council?
Mr. President, I don't see the treasurer here, but I just, since the treasurer is, I'll assume that the treasurer is okay with what is being laid out here?
Yes.
In the resolution, as far as timing, protocol, all of that sort of stuff?
Yes, I met with both the administrator and the treasurer. We met all together, and I talked to the treasurer. I mean, I've been talking with her about this since February, but we also specifically talked two weeks ago and went over it, and she has a copy of it. To my knowledge, she is okay with it. She is, she's also happy to be getting out of the business of doing the accounting for them as well.
Okay. The only other question, this is minor in the grand scheme of things, but when it comes to all of the miscellaneous assets, will that, will you cover the cost of moving all of those, getting all of that out of there?
Yes.
Okay.
And just a silly question. Where will you be moving it? Or don't you know yet?
Yes, we will be moving to eighty-sixth Main Road in Tiverton. We've come to an agreement with the landlord for space, and we're planning on being out of the town space sometime mid-August.
Anything else from the council? Town Administrator, do you want to add anything? Okay. I will entertain a motion regarding the resolution to transfer certain assets of the town to the newly created Tiverton Wastewater District. Second. Motion second, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Thank you, Cabral. Town Clerk?
This is just for scheduling purposes, but I have received a lot of correspondence regarding the ordinance on licensing of the shooting galleries. So, I'm starting to get an awful lot of calls and correspondence in. It's making me feel uncomfortable that we would be able to handle it in the Town Hall. So, I took the liberty of checking with the school department to see when nights would be available here that we'd be able to use, because I have been contacted by the Rod and Gun Club, who said they have quite a few members, and somehow they're getting, you know, it's becoming more contentious. So, I am thinking that if the council is going to need to continue it anyway, that maybe you could make a, they could make a motion tonight to continue, right? They'd have to open it, but they could continue.
What is being suggested, I believe, by the clerk, is that you would vote tonight to agree when you meet next week to open it and continue it?
To a date certain.
So that people, right, so that you don't have to re-advertise it, but that people would know in advance that it would be continued? Because it has been advertised for Town Hall. So, you cannot continue it without re-advertising, which would mean twenty-one days, so you're already moving it off another four weeks if you do it. If you continue it to a date certain on the twenty-eighth, that you can do.
So...
Yes.
So, what you're saying, Andy, is if we waited till next Monday, that then it would be a definite delay of twenty-one days?
I know, but both Mr. LeBeau and the president of the Rod and Gun Club have both told me that there are going to be people present at this, so...
I also spoke with the president.
I see no reason why you should have everybody there and anxious to be heard if you know you can only fit a hundred people. It's on a regular council agenda night, and you may not be able to get them in. If you choose, you can just wait till that night if nobody shows up and you can handle it. But we will not fit more than a hundred people in that building.
I also have been receiving phone calls, and I believe there'll be more than a hundred people.
He was close to him, and he has some comments to it, because he was concerned with the number of people as well.
Does it assume that the high school is not available?
The high school is available the fourth, the twelfth. Not, you couldn't push it back to the twenty-fifth, because I believe that's first day of school or something, so... I mean, I just checked those two days. You can tell me when you want it, you can have it a different day than Monday, or not. So, I just need to know.
But we can't... Nancy, I'm sorry, we can't just switch it to the high school, the high school is not available next Monday?
We can't switch it to the high school because...
Already advertised at Town Hall. So, we would have to open the meeting at Town Hall.
Do we re-advertise it? Do we have enough time to re-advertise it for the Town Hall? That, for you that day?
No.
No, you need twenty-one days.
It had to be twenty-one days earlier.
This is to attempt so that we don't have to hold it out another twenty days. Still, I have that concern of if you push it back another twenty-one days, by the time I could advertise it, you're talking thirty days.
I mean, the twelfth, yeah, I mean, the fourth is a conflict, is the twelfth a conflict for anyone on the council?
I will not be here. Would we be able to, next week, even though it's at Town Hall, if folks were queued appropriately so as not to exceed the hundred-person maximum in Town Hall, that we would be able to make some progress on the public hearing?
First time you had it, when there were thirty people there. So, we said, okay, we'll have it after the Town Hall. But now you have involved, now involved is another facility with a lot of women, and they have concerns.
Yeah, yeah, we've had this issue before, where we've had more than Town Hall will hold. And what happens is, then you have to ask people to leave. And by their right, they don't have to... Yeah, but that's the challenge.
But the fire chief said, and I remember this, was that they have a legal right to come in at any time. So, if you have a hundred people in the building, you have forty outside, one of those people can come in at any time, and he's gonna close us up. That's exactly what the fire chief said.
My only question would be that my wife and I...
Please give your name and address for the record.
My name again is Jim Odell, one thirty Warren Avenue. And my question would be, my wife and I were both in Town Hall early in the first week in July, when Mr. LeBeau did mention that there were gonna be more than a hundred people at this meeting, and gave plenty of notice to reschedule it here. This is, this is twenty-three, twenty-four days ago that he gave notice. Why wasn't this done then?
Jim, we're trying to make progress on...
Absolutely, so am I.
Yeah, because your paper only, because the local paper only runs once a week, and you have to get it to them two days before, and you meet on Monday nights, and the paper comes out on Wednesday, you're essentially on a thirty-day advance notice schedule. It's, the minimum is required twenty-one days by your charter. Change the charter would be something to contemplate. But while that's there, it has to be twenty-one days, and so if you're gonna get it to the paper at a time, it's essentially that six-week cycle.
So, if we do it, Nancy suggests we can do it early.
I will, rated low of twenty-two last week, I will call all my people and tell them not to come to the Town Hall. I don't, I have no problem with it. The ordinance that was written is really absurd anyway. It should be thrown out. We shouldn't even be standing here right now. The problem is, there is, you people have all the paperwork that I've prepared, and my lawyer prepared. So, I'm gonna tell my people not to come. We don't need to push this through any further than it's already been. I will be there with my attorney, and that's it.
Okay, Mr. LeBeau? Mr. LeBeau?
I had come in to have autographs.
Yeah, Mr. LeBeau?
I gave everybody one.
I don't think we should have less people there.
That's, that's their right to come.
They have to stop.
No, you can't stop anyone coming. You can suggest.
I can just suggest that they don't come.
You can suggest, but I would suggest that they all show up.
Yeah, well, we need to get this thing put to bed.
Well, then, that's why we're trying to accommodate. So, that's why...
It's just another...
No, I want, I want to schedule it in August.
Can we open the meeting? And if there's a hundred people there, then cancel it then on that spot? And I'd be more than happy with that. Let's, let's make sure that we can...
Yeah, but then it's another thirty days.
If we can't hold it, cancel it, say, okay, you know what, too many people, we can't hold it.
No, that's, that's, that's not how it works. They have the right to speak, and I'm not gonna cancel it just because we don't have enough room.
Cancel it, you say, look, we can't get everybody in.
No, we can't do that.
Yeah.
It's against open meeting, Lord.
If that's, if that's the case, you know, I'm willing to wait if that's what the case has to be.
Okay. What, what dates, what days are the council available? You're not available the fourth, Brett. You're not available the twelfth.
I'm out of town.
I'm available the twelfth, not the fourth.
All right. Is everybody available on the thirteenth?
Thirteenth?
Is Bill available? Are you out of town the thirteenth, too, Bill?
Hang on.
I mean, I'm, I'm, I'm here the rest of the week of the twelfth, just not the Monday.
I'm on vacation.
Are you here the thirteenth, Bill?
I am here the thirteenth. We would be seven o'clock on the twelfth.
Mr. President?
Yes.
I, I am, I'm not, I'm on vacation the week of the twelfth. As you know, I have arranged for Gina Di Senzo to cover the meeting on the twelfth. I do not know if she's available on the, any other day that week, because I haven't, I didn't anticipate it.
Is she coming to the town council meeting on the eleventh, Andy?
No, the meeting is on the twelfth, because the eleventh is a holiday. And yes, I lined her up back in June for the meeting on the twelfth, so I could take vacation with my family.
Mr. President, I could do, I will probably be just getting back in town by seven o'clock on the twelfth.
Okay, so is everybody available on the twelfth? Yeah, that's our normal schedule here.
That's our normal schedule.
Okay. All right, so then, I will entertain a motion that...
President, before you do that, are you gonna be able to notify the Tiverton Rod and Gun Club, the president and their members in some way?
Yes.
Yes.
Not to show up on the twenty-eighth, is that paying attorney?
Yes, he asked me to call him.
Yeah, the town clerk will handle that.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so, a motion just to open the public hearing on July twenty-eighth regarding public ordinance, proposed ordinance for licensing of the shooting gallery and continue to a date certain at Tiverton High School, which will be Tuesday, August twelfth at seven P.M.
Discussion.
We need a second first.
August twelfth? I checked. I asked them if it was available, and they said yes.
Okay, we need a second first.
Somebody did say...
No, Brett just made the motion.
Wanted me to have people, one wanna speak up.
Yeah, yeah, we're gonna need a...
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second discussion?
Yeah, I just wanna explain, just to explain what would happen if we did it last week. Open meeting laws, we have to allow anyone who wanted to come in, even if you ask your people not to come, that doesn't mean we're not gonna get a hundred people. We also have other business on that night. So if we do get more than a hundred people, what we would have to do is re-advertise it and we'll bring it even later.
It would be another twenty-one to thirty days.
So that is what we're trying to do, because nobody can predict who's gonna show up next Monday night.
I've just been pushed back so far, all my deadlines are gone anyway, all my contracts and other employees are really, at this point right now, it doesn't matter, I just wanna get it done.
This is the best way to guarantee it'll be done on that night, by having it here, well, at least be discussed that night. The other way, there's no guarantee.
Okay, we have a motion and a second.
Mr. President? Yeah, I just, with all due respect to Ms. Di Maduris, it, it wouldn't have to be re-noticed if you continued it, if, if there were so many people there, you could still continue it next week to the twelfth, as long as you continued it as a date certain. The point of bringing it up now was so that you wouldn't have a hundred and fifty people showed up and angry at you for showing up for nothing. But you could continue it if you, I just wanna make, legally, you, you can.
That's what we're doing, we're just noting it to ourselves in essence, that we're going to say at that meeting, we're going to move...
A body can continue it to a date certain.
Then I think we should have it on that Monday and see who shows up. And then we can continue it that Monday, and what difference does it make? If, if, if that's what you're saying, then we should have it that Monday.
Well, it just, that, that, I just wanted to make sure, that's the issue, the issue isn't about the re-noticed, the issue is about the people who would show up.
Well, everyone out there knows that, that there's a chance that this will be continued, people have called me and said, there's gonna be a lot of people, I think we should check our chances on Monday, if it doesn't make a difference, still have it.
It does, because you're gonna have, in my opinion, you're gonna have people who're gonna be there who may not be part of either the Rod and Gun Club or the shooting gallery or whatever, but are interested and wanna be heard, and they may not be able to get in.
Right, so we, if they can...
But again, they have a right to come in...
Right.
To say, you know, even if we continue, but they won't, they won't get an opportunity to be heard.
No one will be, get an opportunity to be heard.
That's why, that's why it should be here at the, at the high school.
We just have a different opinion, that's all.
Okay, any other discussion?
I would guess if you do it on that night, I would, I would put, you know, one of these things up. Instead of temporary, I think that's...
My, my opinion is that we move it to the high school, I want as many people who want to attend be able to attend.
I agree, I think it's a courtesy of the people who are gonna be traveling to get here, so that they can turn the way, increase the capacity, and I think it's leveling it that way.
Okay, any further discussion? We have a motion and a second, all those in favor? Opposed? Six to one. I mean, five to one, sorry, I forgot Jim's not here, Jim's not here.
I stuck it in, but then I...
Okay, I guess, seeing no further business before the council, I, we have a motion to adjourn, all those in...